Hey, Kim, can you shut that door? Okay. Welcome to those that have joined us here in council chambers this evening. And I really appreciate you coming out because I know why the group is in here. We also have a building full of folks this evening. You're going to see us change audiences out as we try to maintain our social distance and do this. But I will tell you, everybody, that welcome to the meeting of the Pecoson City Council for July 15th of 2020. I welcome you all. I welcome everybody back into the city hall. And I know that in these times that, one, that's important, but, two, it's also important that we continue our diligence. So, a little bit different. You see, we're laid out differently in the room, and I know the audience is also laid out a little bit different. But if you'll all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for the many blessings that we've received in our city. As we continue to move forward through the many challenges of our times, we ask that we keep you in mind and that, as council, we keep our citizens in mind as we deliberate the issues that affect them. As always, we ask for your blessing and that your presence be felt by those who serve in our military, especially, Father, those who serve our military in foreign lands as we stay safely here in the United States. Finally, we ask for a blessing that be felt by those who service and our public safety, whether that be federal, state, or local. We do all of this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I have a special presentation. I don't think I've ever done it in this seating. So, I'm going to... I'm going to come here and read, if y'all will mind, and then I'm going to present this to you. This is the family of Olin Evans, right? And his lovely wife. And we appreciate everybody being here this evening to honor him. I'll tell you, as council entered this whole COVID-19 thing, we've lost several good citizens. But we've only lost the few that served the city of Pecoson in a way that Olin did. We didn't forget that. What we wanted to do was, once we reopened, we wanted to honor him. So, we wrote this proclamation, and I hope that it's fitting in some way. And this is a proclamation in recognition and honor of Olin Smith Evans, Sr., running back, head coach, athletic director, principal, and native Bull Islander. Whereas Olin Smith Evans was born a Pecoson native in 1932, descended from a long line of Pecoson ancestry, including the Evans, Inslee, West, and Messick families. And where Olin Smith Evans began his sports legacy as a running back on the 1949 Islanders, the only unbeaten team in Pecoson High School's history, where he graduated in 1950. He proceeded then to earn a bachelor's degree at Randolph-Macon College, served in the United States Army before attending William &amp; Mary College on his path to receiving a master's degree at Hampton University. And whereas Olin Smith Evans, Sr. utilized his education and experiences to become the Pecoson High School's longest-tenured head football coach from 1966 to 1981, which he led the school to its first state semifinal appearance. Upon later reflection, his students' players maintain his commitment, discipline, focus, and hard work were the cornerstones of his coaching philosophy. And whereas Olin Smith Evans became the athletic director for Pecoson High School, where he initiated the Islander wrestling program as a means to expand the range of options for his athletes, which successfully grew to win numerous state titles. And whereas Olin Smith Evans, Sr., during his career as vice principal in 1967 and principal for Pecoson High School in 1986, remaining until his retirement in 1990. And whereas Olin Smith Evans passed this earth in March of 2020 at the age of 87, leaving a legacy which lives on in the memories of all those he touched in sports affiliation and in his everyday life. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the members of the Pecoson City Council that Olin Smith Evans is hereby recognized and applauded for his many contributions, his ethics, and his positive influence that he had on so many lives of so many people in the city of Pecoson. And I've signed this as the mayor of the city of Pecoson. And Ms. Evans, if you'll join me, I'm going to put my mask on now, though.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We greatly appreciate that your husband, and we wanted to offer this as some small recognition of your family and what they've meant to our city.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to speak?
Well, I'll need to say that he'd be most appreciative of this. And also, we have established for anyone who's interested, a scholarship that we'd like to have as a permanent situation. But we have awarded the first one, or actually, it has been awarded, the first young lady. And it's supposed to be basically for someone who does the golden rule. It doesn't make any difference if they're going to college, or trade school, or what, but someone who treats and stands up for the other people. Thank you so much. I appreciate those.
Thank you. And thank you all for honoring me. I want to congratulate you. Now, I think we'll pause for just a second before we open up the audience for visitors. I'll ask council, did you want to switch out the audiences? And any of you that want to speak at the public hearing, you know, you're welcome to stay, or if you've just gotten in here. But if you were just here for Olin, we wanted to keep the crowd separate. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
I think you sit in the middle, sir. I think you sit in the middle.
I could sit in the middle.
Well, they can either all come in, they can come in and fill the seats that you've got, and then I'll just call the names. All right. But let's move forward, and I ask for everybody's indulgence this evening, as we try and fit a lot of people in with social distancing. The next item on the agenda is an audience for visitors. If there's anybody that would like to address council on any subject, this is a good time. I will remind everyone here that the public hearing will carry its own set of comments. So, if you're here to talk about the sale of publicly-owned property, I'll ask that you wait until that time. So, I'll open the audience for visitors and see if anybody would like to address council on another subject. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve our minutes of our regular session of June 22nd, 2020.
Second.
A motion made and secondly, we approve the minutes of the regular session of June 22nd. Any corrections? And I'm also sorry, does Thomas, I guess, is on?
He should be.
Thomas, can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to announce your presence as well. All right. So, we have a motion made and secondly, we approve the minutes of the regular session of June 22nd of 2020. Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 7-0.
Okay. Now, we're at the public hearing. The public hearing this evening is concerning a receipt of bids for the sale of publicly-owned property located within the unimproved portion of Wainwright Drive. This is a public hearing, and I'll open that. Randy, is there a brief introduction on this subject? I know that we had one the last meeting, but if we could just remind everybody what this is?
Yes, sir. This evening is the public hearing that is required for the city council to consider whether or not to sell a piece of public property. We solicited that, noticed that in the paper, and solicited sealed public bids. Following my presentation, the appropriate thing would be to open the public hearing, at which point then the clerk will open the sealed bids and read them. Immediately following that is the public hearing, in which any person may make comments with regard to any of the bids or to the sale of the property in general. Following that and the conclusion of that process, you could close the public hearing. You have the option to move forward. Traditionally, the city council has postponed consideration of sale of public property by one meeting. And just to reminder, you have complete flexibility to decide as a council whether or not to sell the property and what the terms are, but they have to be the terms that are laid out within the bid. For example, and I don't know that it's relevant in this case, but someone might say would like to buy a portion of a property at Messick Point and pay $10,000 to do that, and someone else might suggest $2,000, but their idea for it might be something that the council thinks in the long term might be better. So, you have complete discretion to decide amongst the bids and also to decide for any reason or no reason that you don't wish to proceed.
Yep. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Evie, you have a bid. You want to open that and let us know what that is?
Yes, sir. I have one bid. To whom it may concern, citizens of the city of Pecoson. I am the current owner of the property with tax map number 19-1-8A. I am placing a bid for the purchase of the city-owned easement at the end of Wainwright Drive. This easement was put in place for future development. As I understand, it will allow me access via Wainwright Drive to develop two buildable lots. I have met with city officials numerous times over the past two years, trying to devise a plan that is suitable for the development of the properties with minimal impact to those adjacent to the area. The plan for the land that will be left after the two buildable lots are created is to help neighbors of the property expand their yards by doing various boundary line adjustments. My goal is to create two flagpost-style lots that will be approximately one and one-half acres in size. I would use this easement as a driveway entry to the properties. The land I am planning to develop is already cleared and will require its own stormwater management system as to not adversely affect surrounding properties. I would like to place a bid of $8,000 on the city easement that measures approximately 7,550 square feet of land, assuming we will be able to develop the land into two buildable lots upon the approval of a land survey, engineered development, and drainage plan. Thank you. And I'm very sorry, but I cannot read the signature, and there's no...
Is that Mr. Dunlop?
Yes.
That's Dunlop.
Mr. Dunlop, thank you.
Okay. The reason I know that, got a speaker card here for him. All right. So, we do have several speakers. I'll open the public hearing now and ask for comments, and I see at least, it looks like six, six or eight, six people have signed up to speak, and then I'll open it up for anybody else who wants to speak if somebody has changed their mind. The first speaker is Mr. Jeff Eastep. Jeff, if you can come up to the podium and let us know what you have to say to council on this subject.
I'm the owner of 696 and 698 Pecoson Avenue. Couple of things I just want to say, then we'll go from there. There are approximately 27 plots draining through a culvert pipe in front of my property that's 24 inches in diameter. It's collapsed. It's been collapsed for years before they built 681 Pecoson Avenue. The city of Pecoson knew that. I said, "He went there and climbed in that ditch below tide. You cannot see through that culvert." Every time it rains, a hard rain, 692, 696, and 698 Pecoson Avenue get flooded because the water cannot drain. Approximately right now, you've got 17.86 acres draining through that hole, not counting the 7.1 acres that are getting developed. They're not going to stop at two houses. We know how that works, because at the end of Wainwright, there was going to be two houses years ago, where the second culvert pipe built across Pecoson Avenue never happened. A sediment pond that's never maintained is not there. I walked there Saturday. It don't exist. When you add the other acres, it's going to be 24.96 acres draining through a 24-inch collapsed pipe. We got 12-inch culvert pipes underneath our driveways. Undeveloped land, it can take it. Developed land, it cannot take it. I've done my work on that. There's a natural drainage that crosses. I grew up there, believe me, I got my feet wet many a times and got in trouble. It comes down across on the Islander Way side, across, the natural drainage is still there, and it ends up right in the property that you're trying to sell or auction off. So, are we going to close up natural drainages? I was told years ago, I can't, because if you're going to close that one, I'm going to close mine, and Islander Way ain't going to be happy. Because right now, I'm draining all of Islander Way, because they were supposed to put a drainage in across Pecoson Avenue to drain the water. I was at the meetings. So, I'm getting all that water through a 12-inch pipe underneath my property. So, when it rains hard, it floods, backs up, runs across the yard, through my garage, and out my driveway. Got pictures. So, we can't take another seven acres being developed without fixing the problem. I don't know how you're going to drain it the other direction or that direction, but 692, 696, and I'm speaking for Charlene, and 698 can't take the water. We can't. When you develop land, level it out, right now, it's like this back there. I walked it Saturday, walked the whole property. It's mysteriously a bunch of dirt been put into the back of the property for some reason. You can't level that property out, put roofs, concrete, drainage, and flood us out anymore. We just can't take it. It's a... Other than that, I mean, I don't know what to say other than that. I mean, the culvert pipe is a main issue under that road right now.
All right. So, intermixed with the, Randy, if you can have the planning director kind of get with him after that, because I heard some issues not necessarily associated with what council will or will not do with this thing, but culvert pipes. Let's just get a handle on that and let Public Works take a look at that.
Right. It's been a camera run under there. It's collapsed. I couldn't even see daylight through it.
I'm not done yet. First we've heard of it. All right. Thanks. All right. That's Wally. If you can just get with him after, you know, after the public hearing or whatever. All right. Thanks. All right. The next speaker is Jesse Dunlop.
I'm the landowner looking to develop the land. We've done some developmental stuff on the south side and some other things, and kind of a recurring thing is the development of land, it's not really my responsibility to fix existing drainage issues. It's my responsibility to not make them worse and impede them with what we create. We do a lot of retention ponds, bi-retention trenches, all that stuff. It's what we do for a living. I'm sure you've all seen other developmental plans for that land that have ranged from seven houses to 17 houses. I have a couple of copies of all of them, and that's not what I'm trying to do. One and a half acres, I can even, if our survey or engineer deem it necessary, we could even put a small retention pond on the borderline of the two properties to catch all of our runoff. The collapsed drainage pipe is an issue. Wally and I walked the property the other day, and he's aware of that. As much as that is an issue, is also the existing drainage easements in that property are unmaintained or just off of that property that run adjacent to Wainwright Drive and go from Wainwright back to Pecoson Avenue. There's a ditch there that has trees in it as big as my waistline. Again, the development of my property should not be to remedy existing drainage issues. It should be to not make them worse. There is a retention basin there. It just doesn't ever see any water. It's one of the guys that owns the property that that basin sits on, he cuts it regularly. And it's an obvious depression that's probably three foot lower in grade than most everything else there. But my goal is just to develop those two plots. I have seven and a half acres there, 7.1 some acres. I'm looking to put two houses on three acres of it. There's no Walmart, there's no apartments, there's nothing dramatic going in there as far as impervious coverage. You know, all the localities do a great job of stormwater management and holding developers to a pretty high standard as far as what they're allowed to get away with as far as runoff nowadays. I know because I installed all those facilities in York County, James City County, the south side, everywhere. So, I'm just hoping in consideration, along with the bid, that we can be granted the rights to develop the land. It's what people buy land for, as far as I understand, you know? If they want to keep it for, if anybody wants to keep it clear and force pasture, grazing grounds for trees, I would gladly sell it to them as well and give them the option to keep it for grazing grounds. So, but that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. The next speaker is Dale Blankenship. Dale?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I live at 13 Wainwright Drive. And Jeff Eastep was just telling you about the water that runs that way. You know, the water that runs his way goes there and stops at his place. The water that goes the other way comes to my way. And, you know, we have fought, and I've been here on several occasions, trying to do something with the drainage. City council's been, no, it's not y'all, but been pretty inept at maintaining and forcing the drainage issue to be maintained there. We keep hearing that the asphalted part of the extension down Wainwright Drive, all the rain was supposed to go that way through the holding pond and out to Pecoson Avenue. None of it from the road should be coming towards my way and going down the ditch between 13 and 11 Wainwright Drive. We get so much water that way that the city just recently had to expand the size of the gutter to feed that ditch down there. So, it cost the city money to maintain that. The drainage isn't going anywhere. Now, he wants to build two houses on three acres. There are seven acres there, so magically four acres disappear or getting sold off to someone else. How do we know that that isn't going to be sold off to someone else to build houses on? And he's talking about selling the property to existing property owners and expanding their yards. That's great. Also, for the use of Wainwright Drive, if I'm not mistaken, he is an adjacent property owner to this property. So, he actually has access to this property through his property. So, it's from what everybody is telling me, and what I can see is Wainwright Drive isn't the only way to access that property. So, that's where I am. So, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker is David Hefner. Dave?
Good evening. Just to follow up Mr. Blankenship's report there, we are in 15 Wainwright, so we are actually directly in front of where the easement is now that is looking to be sold off. I've only been there two years, so we can't speak for what's happened prior to that, but we can say that in the last two years, we've put thousands of dollars into trying to get water off of the front yard, which is, again, directly in front of that easement. We've had trees taken down, graded, reseeded, the whole nine yards, so we've got moss growing everywhere. It's a retention pond technically right in front of our front yard. Every time it rains hard, such as was described earlier, the water sits there. We've had a couple of companies come out, talk about French drains and other things to get the water off the property. They cannot push the water back onto the street to go down to the public drain because of the grading system. It would have to go extremely uphill up our driveway. They cannot go towards the easement, because if they go that way, it'll end up in another individual's yard. Or we could go out towards these seven acres of land. Or we could go out towards these seven acres of land. Where do we put that water? If the easement is sold off and becomes any kind of road, all our water is just going to stay right there. It's going to have no other place to go. So we would ask that you reconsider that.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Ulysses Antonio.
My name is Tony Ulysses Antonio. I'm the original developer of that property on, off of Wainwright Drive. For me, and there was eight acres there that was developed back in 1986. And at that time, I approached the city and offered to put a new pipe in under that road to drain that water. And they told me no. I was going to do it out of my own pocket. That was part of the problem for the drainage. When my property was approved for eight lots, I had to drain 28 acres of property for our nine acres of land. Not only that, when the Andersons bought that house on the end where he was just addressing, he refused to go by our, what do you call it? Like when you have a deal made between the owners of the property, that each person was supposed to take care of their ditch. They refused to do it. Mr. Anderson did not want anybody. He wasn't going to clean it. So the city had to come down and clean it one time. You've got logs, trees, and everything. We had that whole ditch cleaned up perfect. Okay, so he refused to keep it clean. The other problem is that the water does drain into the holding pond. But when you have a heavy rain, the holding pond fills up, goes over the dam, doesn't drain like it's supposed to down at the other end. And, and it comes across their yard only because when we developed them eight acres, we were approved for eight lots, nothing to do with no easements or nothing. Debbie Bess made it clear to me when I had to try to divide the last four acres, she said the only way I can do it is to do divided in half, two acres apiece. Okay? And she told me that if I would give y'all a 50-foot easement, she could help me get that approved right away. If I didn't, she said it would take me maybe a year or more to subdivide those four acres. I was forced to give the city that property. And I find it hard to believe that the city wants to sell that property, that I donated to them so they can make money off of it. I don't think that's right. Okay? And all this other problem that's going on is all been because of the drainage system. And the city had to let me put that big pipe across the ditch, across the road, into that other property before they built those other three houses. There wouldn't have been this kind of problem that other gentleman was talking about. And I feel like right now that it's not right for the city to sell that easement. They should give that property back to me because I'm the one that gave it to them. I was forced to it. And that's all I have to say.
Yep, thank you. Okay, Joanne Nellows.
I live at 676 Pecoson Avenue. I actually am beside Mr. Hefner. And I love his woods, and I don't want the chance that that might disappear. My issue is with the public notice that appeared in the paper. I apparently am the only person who actually saw it. Did anyone see it in the paper? Most people never get the daily press anymore. And if they do, it's the Wednesday and the weekend. I think the city should look at another way if you truly want the public to be notified, to find a different way to notify people. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, that's all the people that signed up to speak. Would anybody else like to speak at this time? All right, yes, sir. Just let us know what your name and address is for the record.
My name is Charles Morris. I live at 12 Wainwright Drive. And City Council and all of y'all, thank y'all for letting me speak. I didn't sign up because a couple of things I didn't, I thought they would all say. Some of this water runoff on Wainwright Drive, 12, Gordon Hysel was here as mayor. I've called him Christmas Eve one night because it was flooded. We got a rain coming in. But Jonathan Montgomery used to be the Public Works Director here. He'd come up with an idea because I had brought movies. I've got a movie camera on this. But Tony Ulysses, his land, it drains down towards Wainwright Drive. All right, Jonathan come up with an idea to put a speed bump, a swell there, deflect the water off of Wainwright Drive. And they got a little swell down through there. Mr. Wally, he came down the other day and I showed it to him. And I cleaned it myself one time. It needs cleaning again, but it's not part of the city ditch system. And in fact, next week, I'm going to go down and clean it again while we did and kind of get it. But that deflector deflects that water that was coming down like a waterfall down that little swell. But when it gets full enough, it'll back up and go in Dale Blankenship's in front of his house and mine too. See, I got the low point in front of my house, 12 Wainwright Drive. And it's been a problem, problems this over the years and over the years. And I don't know what y'all can do to fix the problem. It's going to cost a lot of money to get the drainage fixed. As far as this gentleman wanting to build a two-acre, I mean, two lots back there, it started off before with two lots. How many on the other places? It's six homes back there now. And they told us it only would be two, but it grows, keeps growing. And if this other man buys this property, I mean, the easement, and y'all allow him to build us two, then I think it would cost so much to get all that drainage problem fixed that I don't think, you know, it's unfeasible. I mean, think about it because it's still a problem in how, how it rains. But if y'all wanted to come down and look at that, y'all, I'll take you through that myself. And I know Dale Blankenship would take it, Tony would take it and everything. But bring your tick spray because there's a lot of ticks back there. And that's all I got to say. But that, with that swell, though, the day Jonathan Montgomery put in, that helped Wainwright Drive, helped me a lot. But we still every now and then get a good one. And it won't, you know, the water won't, it backs up down on Wainwright Drive.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
All right, anyone else that didn't get a chance to sign up that wants to speak? Okay? If not, I'll close the public hearing then and ask council for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, given all the problems with this sale of property, I move that we postpone this thing until our next meeting in August and direct the city to do whatever study they have to do to come up with what is actually going on down there. So that's my motion, postpone it until August.
I'll second it. All right, so we have a motion made and seconded to postpone. Comments of council? Any? Thomas?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, I agree with Councilman Green's motion. I just would like to know from staff because I think they know the history of the drainage issues. One month is enough time to, you know, adequately, adequately prepare a report for us to make a judgment on this. But if it's going to wash them, I prefer to back it up. If not, if they're okay with the month, then I'm okay with it.
All right, Wally, you want to address it?
Yes. Let me take off my Raiders mask here. Basically, what you've heard tonight is that there are indeed a lot of drainage issues on the Wainwright Road properties. There's no mistaking about that. There's no mistake that the properties do flood the way that people are talking about it. One of the things that I've, as Mr. Dunlap indicated, when I went on my visit to the property, I wanted to get a better look because as a newcomer, I wasn't familiar with all of the issues. And I wanted to see exactly what is Wainwright Drive. Well, it's basically a bunch of weeds and a bunch of trees. I saw where it was going to empty out, and I informed Mr. Dunlap that, you know, he would not be able to use any of the drainage situation that's in, that's as part of the Ulysses subdivision. Now, as to the question of can I sort of formulate a report between now and next month, I think I can, but I'm not going to tell you that I, I mean, there's a lot of different angles to it, I guess is what I'm trying to say. There are some other things that we're investigating as well about the area. But yes, I can prepare a staff report.
Okay, thank you. All right. You have something else?
And if, and if we get to that point and you have not been able to do it, we can postpone it again. So I'm open to whatever.
So you postponed it. Did you call out one month?
One month till August.
Okay. All right, so it's postponed for one month. All right, sorry, the public hearing's closed on that, sorry. All right, so what I would say is this, council, we've got the motion made and seconded that we postpone. Heard a lot of things of which, some of which will do. I believe, Randy, please correct me if I'm wrong, this is, this is all improvements on a private development? Not held, the street is not held in public property?
Mr. Mayor, I do not profess to be an expert in this. It was all installed prior to my arrival 11 years ago, including the, the swell that was mentioned. One aspect of this is very much the fact that the primary drainage channel that they've referenced several times is a private drainage easement and not a public drainage easement. And that complicates everything. But I think we can map it for you, outline the issues. Some of these issues, most of them already exist. May be added to in the future, although I do know that our, our two-lot subdivision process requires that the property deal with its own issues. But even dealing with its own issues won't address the pre-existing problems. We'll try to diagnose this for you and give you some options whether or not you decide to sell this piece of property for us to be able to move forward to improve drainage in the area.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. I just want to make sure that I was thinking correctly. All right, nothing further from council? Then Evie, if you'll call the roll for postponement?
Certainly. Councilman Southall? Vice Mayor Freeman?
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay, very well. So this matter is postponed, and it'll be on the agenda in August. You know the date of that next meeting by chance? Knew I'd catch you with a question you couldn't answer.
I live at the 10th, sir.
Around August 10th, the second Monday. Okay. All right, thank you very much for that, council. Thank you, public, for those comments. Really appreciate the history on that piece of property. Second item under new business then is an ordinance making appropriations. I'm sorry, we're under new business section. The first item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority for household chemical collection. Bernita, good to see you.
Good to see you too. Good evening, everyone. How are y'all tonight?
Good.
So we are asking that we consider signing a resolution authorizing the city manager to go into contract with VP Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority to run the household chemicals and computer recycling events. None of the dates will change, none of the locations will change, the services do not change. This still gives us the residents of the city the ability to go to 13 separate locations. The one in Pecoson is held on, always held the first Saturday in October. The new vendor will be MXI Environmental Services LLC out of Abingdon, Virginia. The old service provider was Clean Harvest Environmental Services, Inc. The new vendor does meet all the standards states in the previous agreements, of the previous agreements. MXI will be held accountable for setup, safety, disposal, and dismantling. This year's budget, this has been in our budget for the last 10-plus years. And each year's budget is based on the previous year's usage. Any questions?
No, so let me just cut, cut to the chase. I think this is where I'm just going from memory, so you're welcome to correct me. I think we only have a pick, a couple pickups that are local in a year. Is that correct?
Actually, there are 13. Most of them are in York County and Hampton.
I'm talking about within the city.
Only one in the city. It's the first Octo, the first Saturday in October. And it's held in the pool parking lot.
But then the citizens, because of this arrangement, can attend the events or the drop-offs in the surrounding locality?
Yes, yes, they can.
All right, I just wanted to make sure, like I said, it's a little bit of a confusing program and a lot of people think, well, it's got to be in Pecoson to go do that.
Also, the solid waste calendars that went out in the middle of June. If you, the calendar's on one side. If you flip it over, the yellow box gives you the dates and the locations. The time is always from 8 until noon.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is someone prepared to make a motion on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Virginia Peninsula's Public Service Authority, special project agreement, household chemical collection service agreement for the collection of household chemicals at household chemicals and computer recycling events.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We approve this resolution dealing with household chemical collection agreement with Peninsula Public Service Authority. Questions or comments of council?
I just have a comment. I've used New York County facility several times. You drive up, you don't even get out of the vehicle. They take all the stuff out of your, your vehicle, throw it in the various containers. It works really, really well.
Okay, thank you. Get him to do mine. All right, roll call if you would please, Evie.
Certainly. Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman? Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero. Thank you.
All right, the next item under new business is an ordinance making appropriations for the fiscal year 2021 in the capital project fund, and specifically the undesignated bond interest.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Tonight, you have an ordinance making an appropriation for the bond interest left over from last year, FY '20. We have a couple of projects to present to you tonight. The first one is replacement for the mobile device terminals that are in the fire department. We have eight currently that have Microsoft 7. They need to be upgraded to Microsoft 10. Our current provider is York County. We have shared services. Unfortunately, we cannot continue with the sevens because they will not be supported. So therefore, we need to replace them. So that's your first project. The second one is the Messick boat ramps. The wave screens are deteriorating, so therefore, we do need to get those replaced. So I should point out, each project, we're looking at $25,000 for the Messick boat and $68,000 for the MDTs. And those are going to be purchased through York County.
All right, any questions of council? It's an interesting world in which we live. I will tell, I will just make this general statement, just so we're all correct. Where I, where I work, we are actually having to go back and put Microsoft 7 on existing systems because it is more compatible with some of the older programs.
Yes.
So it's always a quandary. Do you upgrade or do you, or do you hold the line and keep fulfilling? So understand the quandary that you're in and appreciate that. So is there a motion that we proceed with this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to the capital.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to the capital project fund of the City of Pecoson, Virginia for fiscal year 2021.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded, we approve these two items. All right, questions or comments of council? Seeing none, hearing none, Evie, please?
Certainly, Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
The third item is an ordinance making additional, additional transfers for fiscal 2021 in the general fund, and this is dealing with the Federal CARES Act funding.
Okay, so tonight I do have an ordinance appropriating about $700,000 of that CARES Act money. We'll still have a small balance of about $200,000 that we'll have to bring back to you at a later date, but tonight we have a few projects that we'd like to bring forward that would reimburse the city for their non-budgeted expenditure. Remember, part of the CARES Act, it's got to be non-budgeted, it's got to be unplanned, and it's got to have a couple of factors in it, like promoting social distancing and so forth. So a couple of projects that we've come up with, that we'd like to reimburse the city for is mobile device terminals for the police department. Currently, they do not have any, so they have to go into the police station to do reports. So again, social distancing is going to be a hindrance on that, as well as computer equipment to telework from home. I have Captain Waddell as well as Chief Bowen here, if you'll have any questions for them afterwards. We also have the fire department, that we have two chiefs that do not have mobile devices. Since we do not have them, we can use this money to purchase new ones. This allows them not to have to go into the fire station or go into the municipal building to do reports. We are also requesting for a washer and dryer at Station One. This is something new, currently, the fire department takes their turnout gear to localities that are outside of the city, that causes additional exposure, this allows them to wash turnout gears immediately in those stations. So this includes both the washer and dryer and outfitting the station. Couple other little things, CPR assistant devices, they've requested two, so therefore, it prevents social distancing, so therefore, the machine does the work instead of the medics, as well as a machine to look down the throat. That way, you don't have to get face to face with the patient. I have Battalion Chief Young here tonight as well, so if you have any questions on the MDTs, the washer and dryers, the equipment that they're requesting to promote social distancing, they're here as well. Couple other little items that I think I'm excited to present, self-checkout kiosks for the library. I think that's going to be an interesting tool for the librarians. Therefore, when someone's there, instead of waiting in line, they're able to check out on their own. Software for Parks and Rec, this allows for citizens to sign up for our classes, our programs online versus going down to the municipal building. School division, big one. There is a disclaimer on this, right now, it's a small amount, it could grow. So we could be coming back later on with that $200,000, asking more money for schools. Again, we don't know what that is, this is a placeholder, but this is to start them up for the new year, whether it's bringing the kids back in or still working from home. Risk management, we've included our additional costs for custodian. We have city hall and the buildings being cleaned multiple times during the day, so that's an additional cost that we did not plan for, as well as the cleaning supplies in order to do so. Finally, a neat thing is we're going to put in our air conditioner that we just got replaced a few months ago, UV lights, this has been proven to kill the virus. So all buildings in the locality will have this mechanism to kill the virus if it enters. Also, we're going to update any and all restrooms to touchless. So currently, our sinks, you operate by holding the faucet, it's now going to be a touchless operation, so therefore, again, trying to have that contact and as little as possible. And then, of course, the big one, wireless mics here. As you can see, it's hard to promote social distancing with our mics. We are going to upgrade this chambers to have wireless mics. Then finally, economic development, we are excited that the staff is working on a small business grant. I have Dave Callis here tonight as well, if you have any questions, to provide reimbursement to small businesses that were affected. And finally, solid waste, people have stayed home, so therefore, they're throwing out more stuff, therefore, we've incurred more cost. So instead of having the citizens pay for that in the future, we have the ability to utilize the CARES fund to reimburse the city for it.
Excellent, okay.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll tell you, I, look, I hate to drag a lot of the hardworking staff members that I'm seeing, looking at out in the audience here and not give them a chance to speak. So from the fire department, I'd like to hear, because most people will hear washer and dryer, okay, and then they'll see this price tag and they'll go, there's that city again, so you can talk about that. Chief, if I can get you or Mr. Waddell to talk about your items, and then Dave Callis to talk about how we will attempt to help small businesses. Go ahead, thank you.
Sure. The, the washer and dryer, termed more specifically their extractors for our turnout gear. Federal regulations mandate that we cannot wash any of our turnout gear with any other articles of clothing we have, or in any other machine that we have. We have to have a dedicated machine just for that gear because of all the carcinogens that we're exposed to in the fires. Secondarily, and, and you noted the price tag, residential style washers and dryers will not handle our turnout gears. They're specially designed for the turnout gear so that we get a longer life out of them. The, the washer and dryers that we currently use are in Hampton, allows us to go over there and use them when we, when we do need to have them done. But that's why you'll see the discrepancy, what you may consider a good price tag for the residential version just won't work for the, for the turnout gear. When you have a, a load of this gear go into the extractor, dry, it weighs 50 to 60 pounds. When it gets wet and, and all the spin and everything, it has to be installed properly, it takes a special machine to do that. Were there any other projects that we had that you would like to hear more about? We had the.
You can tell, you can tell us about every one if you'd like.
Sure, while we're up here if you have questions. One that she mentioned is the CPR assist devices. These are devices that do mechanical CPR, they replace one of our providers from having to do manual CPR right up against somebody, it's a machine that circles the body and has, it's a piston-driven machine that actually performs CPR. Much more efficient than, than what we are able to provide with humans. We currently own two on our first-run ambulances, we have none for fire trucks, which quite often, we may have a fire truck get to the scene first, and we would rather have that technology across the board so that we're providing the same care every time we go out, regardless of what truck shows up. The laryngoscopes are the, the airway visualization devices. Currently, if somebody has any airway issues or cardiac arrest, we would secure their airway so that we can control it, and we can make sure that we're getting the oxygen down into the lungs. To do that, it requires a provider to be within inches of somebody. We have to manually insert a device into their mouth and, and their, their forehead would be here as I'm looking, like literally that close. The new devices that are available now are fiber optic cameras that replace that, that device that I slide into their mouth has a camera right here, so I'm not only limited now to how far I can extend my arm, and I can be this far back instead of right up against them, which would really decrease the, the exposure chances during our pandemic that we're going through. And I think those are the only projects that we had on our list. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Nope, thank you. Chief, good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you all too. Couple things about the MDTs. When the COVID crisis hit us several months ago, we quickly realized that we needed to close the buildings down, which we did appropriately, and we, we tried to make special arrangements for officers who are wearing appropriate masks to meet citizens for citizen-related contacts. But it didn't eliminate the requirement for the officers to come back to the station for a number of reasons, to file reports, to, to type their reports, to speak to the magistrate and other things like that. The, the MDTs will allow the officers not only to be dispatched from the computer in their car, it'll allow them to communicate with each other from the car, it will allow them to have access to our records management system in the car, so they can read old reports, get information at the scene without having to come to the station and access one of our, our computers in the station. Also, they can type and enter reports from the police car. So during the COVID crisis, when we had, a couple of officers got exposed to some type of what we thought could have been COVID-19, turned out to be the flu, we had 37.5% of our patrol officers out on quarantine at the same time. That was a significant, difficult thing for us to overcome. We were fortunate that the schools decided to let out and we had access to our SROs to pull them back to use them, but we were, we had a lot of people out at the same time. And that was because they have to come back to the station to do all their work. So this, this will eliminate that happening in the future by allowing them to do that work in the police car, so they'll have less contact with their coworkers, and then we have appropriate protocols in place that Kelly could talk about when they're dealing with citizens. If you guys want to know that, he can talk a little bit about that, I think, so. But that, that was a really important part, so this really makes a big difference in, it's about working smarter, not harder, but also protecting our people who obviously, you know, did, did suffer some effects of the rules that we had in place at the time these symptoms started arising in our, in our, in our members, so. I think it's important that we do what we can to try to eliminate some of that contact. Because I'm telling you, it only takes one person coming into our station with the flu, and we've got multiple people out for weeks sometimes. And we've seen that before with other variants of the flu, so. I think this is important, and I would highly recommend that you support us on this, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Kelly, do you want to talk about the protocols that we're dealing with citizens?
Yes, go ahead. I'll tell you, half the reason I'm having you guys talk, I, I got this brief from Randy. I'm actually learning a few things that he got wrong, okay? But, but the, it's, it's important for our citizens to hear it. You know, what is it that we're, that we're going to use the money on, what capabilities does it bring us? So I think it's important, go ahead.
Yes, sir, good evening, council members. The precautions that we've been taking, especially in calls for service, responding to people's houses, if at all possible, we're conducting business outside, we're, we're getting citizens outside on the front porch, in the front yard, interacting with them, getting all the information we need for reports that way. It also allows us to properly social distance and, and be in that fresh air environment. If we have to go in residences, we do have masks that we're putting on. We have a lot of PPE, our gloves, we've got sanitizer, hand sanitizer, and disinfectant sprays that every officer has been issued. We got from an organization, Operation Blessing, out in Chesapeake. They had five gallon buckets full of sanitation and equipment and PPE that each officer's been issued. We constantly check in with the officers to make sure that they have enough equipment to get them through the shifts, and if not, we've got other reserve supplies that we make sure that they're taking. But as Chief said, with the computers in the vehicles is very important because we've got three main computers at the station that officers use, and just in patrol, we've got 16 officers that will be sharing those three computers. So if one of them is not properly cleaned, if somebody's doing a report and has to run out for an important call, and in the meantime, somebody else uses it, there's a potential for exposure there. So it's, it's very important to, to keep the officers using their own equipment and less sharing of those, those supplies.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Real quick on a personal note? Just want to thank you for your support while I've been here and been your chief, you guys, this is your last meeting before I leave, so. I want to thank you for your trust and your support, and tell you how privileged and honored I am to serve the, this city for 13 years, so. Thank you for all that you've done for us and continue to do to support law enforcement in the City of Pecoson, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chief, really appreciate that. Somehow or another, I thought we had one more meeting, but I'm glad that you said that. All right, then, then Dave, you want to talk about what, what you're putting together for the businesses of the City of Pecoson?
Yes, sir.
Dave, I need to put you on a five-minute timer.
I don't have any PowerPoints tonight, sir, so it'll be okay. Staff is very excited about the opportunity to disburse $80,000 to our Pecoson small business. And just, I'll give you a couple of highlights on what we're trying to do, and I think you'll see this in a number of localities around the area, they're doing something similar. Our grants are going to be non-recurring, they're going to be given to eligible for-profit small businesses not to exceed $2,000. So technically, we could help 40 businesses at that rate. It's for profit businesses interrupted by the Governor Northam's executive order, March 13th. We're going to run it through November 30, so that gives people plenty of time to apply. Some of the basic stuff, you have to have a Pecoson business license and be in good standing, obviously. Have fewer than 25 employees as of January 1st of this year. Business verifies they intend to continue operations in Pecoson when government orders are lifted. So we look forward to working with our businesses, and we hope to get a lot of business from them applying for this money.
Yep. Oh, that was only a minute. Is that Dave?
Well, I have more later.
Okay, thank you. Hey, and thank you all, what I, what I would say is, I wanted everybody to speak this evening, because look, there's a, there's a lot of things going on in the world that are wrong, okay, that we just don't like as, as citizens, we don't really understand. I wanted our citizens to get a chance to hear from our staff directly. I know I'm kind of off, off my agenda here, but I'm, I'm going to basically say that I have been very pleased and honored to have watched this city go through this crisis. I've seen us go through other crises, being floods or hurricanes or, or whatever. This one a little bit different. And the ability to adapt and not even miss a beat is because of the people that I let speak and their partners and coworkers. So I don't want to overlook anybody, but this city did an extremely difficult, and it's still on, on top of us, but an extremely difficult situation, and we've come through it with no really degradation in services provided. And we've come through it financially well, and that's because of our staff. It's not because of this council, I'd like to, I'd like to take the credit for it and say it was because of us. It was not, it was because of our staff. And so not only did I want you to speak and let our citizens hear from you, but I also wanted to applaud you. So thank you for what you do, thank you for what you do every day for our citizens, so thank you for that. So I think we have a motion made and seconded?
Not yet.
Not yet, go for it, sir.
I move that we adopt an ordinance making transfers for fiscal year 2021 in general fund, federal CARES Act funding.
Second. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, we take the money that the federal government has let us have for COVID-19 appropriations and problems and apply it. So thank you, counsel, for moving forward on this item. Evie, please?
Certainly. Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman? Councilman Hux? Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay. Next item under new business is a resolution for small business assistance, community development block grant application. Five minutes again, Dave?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. As council will recall, at the June 8th city council meeting, staff presented an overview of a potential Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development block grant for small businesses assistance for the city that we intended to pursue, not to be confused with the CARES in any way. This was completely different. If awarded, this grant will be utilized to provide direct financial reimbursement to eligible small businesses who've incurred unanticipated costs to meet state mandated requirements for reopening and safe operation processes during the COVID-19 crisis. Now currently, the City of Pecoson is working in partnership with York County and the City of Williamsburg on a regional grant application to secure this funding. Should the grant be received, it is proposed that York County serve as the lead applicant and fiscal agent. and fiscal agent. As the fiscal agent, your county would handle required federal paperwork, fund distribution, and accounting for the grant. In order to finalize and execute a contract for the grant funding, DHCD requires that each of the participating localities adopt a resolution in support of it. Given this requirement, staff appears before you tonight to request City Council's consideration of the attached resolution, which encompasses the following: the endorsement of the regional application, and the authorization for the city manager to execute the required documents for the program. And we appreciate your consideration.
All right. Council, are you prepared to make a motion on a resolution to allow us to proceed to make grant application?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution of support for regional Virginia CDBG urgent need small business recovery funding opportunity for COVID-19 response.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We approve this resolution for this block grant to proceed forward. Questions or comments? Hearing done. Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Thank you. Okay, we're at comments of the city manager, and I'll have to tell the public that stepped out of line here a few times, and everything that Randy told me about the actual grants was correct. Okay, so.
I figured you were kidding. And the reason that you knew I figured you were kidding is because I didn't turn as pale as Councilman Hux's shirt, that I had made a mistake. Thank you, members of council, for your support on the CARES Act funding, both that and the community development block grant. It's unusual that resources come our way that don't have a cash match. And while if we were drawing the grant guidelines up ourselves for ourselves, they would be different, there is absolutely enough room to make important and appropriate investments in our community, from public safety to our schools, to our local business community. So thank you for that, and we will be back to you in a couple of months, two to three months, with a plan for the balance of the money. One of the things we have yet to take credit for is that there are certain direct expenses related to COVID-19 staffing. Every time, for example, Graham, myself, Dave, the chiefs participate in a regional conference call on COVID-19, that's a reimbursable expense. So we are tracking that, and that's nothing that will simply provide monies to reimburse us for expenses we've already had. So some of this will basically go to refill the coffers. Not quite the same as dealing with the revenue issues, but it helps in the same way, in that it improves our bottom line. Also, thank you for your patience. We tried out a new setup in the council chamber today. Hopefully, you felt that this modified you better than the elongated, I don't know what you would call it.
We don't know what we call it either.
Yeah. Hopefully, this worked better. I think it allowed us to afford the public that we're speaking, that we anticipate speaking, a way to look you in the eye, and you look them in the eye, and hopefully hear each other as well, and you'll note that we took away the dius that always had the microphone problems. I don't know where it is, but we did account for that. And lastly, and it's small, but as we do more and more meetings online, including electronic participation from council members, you know the importance of having an audio system that will support that. Last year at this time, we didn't have a video system that could support that, and with your help, we made those investments, and with what you approved tonight, we'll finish that out, and we'll be able to have as many of these electronic meetings, which I hope we don't have to have much longer, for as long as is necessary. So I thank you, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Council directives. Councilman Canelo, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to apologize for not being there, the statement, and relative knowledge, for not being there for the stuff that was presented, and for Mr. Olin Evans, and on behalf of all of us, Coach National Football Staff, I want to thank his family for the many years that they supported him and really laying the groundwork, not just for the successful football program we have, but our school system. And I want to thank he's going through for 13 years of service to our city and keeping our home not just one of the safest places in the Commonwealth to live, but one of the safest in the country. And of course, continue to thank staff for all they do and all they've done getting through these really trying times. So thanks, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Southall, you're the furthest from me, so you go ahead and go next.
Okay. I would like to thank the Evans family for coming out tonight and receiving the well-deserved recognition and honor for Olin Evans. He really supported this city really well for many, many years. And I'd also like to thank the citizens who came out tonight to participate in their government. I like to see that, and for those at home also. And listening to the business that goes on tonight, I remain to be a very proud citizen of Pecosin and glad that I live here. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Andrews.
I, too, would like to offer my condolences to the Evans family, and it was nice to see so much of his family come out and support, to support that, as well as the people that came to speak tonight, to participate in their city government. We don't get to see that often, which is kind of a good thing, because it means there aren't a lot of people that are upset about something, but I'm happy to see people come and speak when they feel that there's a need. And I really wanted to thank Tanya and the city staff for their efforts in getting our city money for the CARES Act, so that we don't have to spend, take away money from other places to spend on those things. I know that's a lot of work to track that and keep track of it and to do all that work and to get those needed items, to keep our city employees and our citizens and to help our small businesses that are suffering. So thank you for all your work doing that. And also thanks to Chief Bowen. Congratulations, I guess, on your second retirement. And Randy, you have got your work cut out for you, filling those shoes, and thank you.
They're big shoes, actually.
Thank you for your service to our city, and we're going to miss you.
Councilman Hux.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to follow up on the city manager's comments. I thought the configuration of council chambers tonight worked very well. I liked it and appreciate y'all's thoughtfulness and consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Green.
Just like to second everything that's been said, especially the kudos to our chief. He's been a great chief and been a great asset to this city, and his shoes are going to be hard to fill, and I've seen him covered with applesauce before, and he and I have an affinity to applesauce now, but he knows what I'm talking about.
I think I'll leave that alone.
Just like to remind everybody that since we don't have a second meeting, the mobile food pantry will be on the 28th of this month, from 10 to 1. It'll be another drive-through, and unfortunately, the benevolence of the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank has run out, according to their regulations. What we've done in the past drive-throughs is if you weren't registered, we didn't care. You got served, and that's the way it should have been. But now we are going to have to register these people, and we'll make it as painless as we can. What we think will happen is we'll ask them to pull to the side and come to some designated point, which Randy, if you and Dave can just give me a couple of minutes of your time afterwards, I'll give you our thoughts of how it might work, if it's okay with y'all, and just ask them to get registered so that we won't have to do this again. Everything will be a lot smoother, but they are required now to get those people registered. So the 28th of July, from 10 to 1, at the Old Municipal Building. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Freeman.
Just kind of repeat what's been said. The city is doing a great job under these unusual circumstances, and it's because we have such great staff, and just wanted to reemphasize that. And we're going to miss you, Chief.
Yeah, and I don't have anything else that I haven't already said except for one thing, and that is, one, Chief Bowen is not leaving the city of Pecosin, he's just going to become one of us, a regular citizen, right? Second thing is, thank you for your service. You definitely improved the police department in your tenure, something that we're all proud of, and I know that being a policeman in the city of Pecosin and leading a department in a safe neighborhood actually puts you at more difficult sometimes than, you can only go up, okay? It's hard to maintain, and I will remind everybody in our citizen, one of the things that I tell anybody about our police department is they have a diverse set of thought processes going on in their mind, and it's probably because of the chief and his values on community policing. It's hard to recognize that 98% to 99% of our citizens are going to want to be very formal, they're going to want to engage our policemen, and our policemen need to be able to engage them back, and that's 99, 98, 99% of the time. And then there's the 1% or 2% of the time where you have to be a hardened police officer and do harder things. And to be able to be prepared for both of those scenarios is something that I feel like is not natural, that is trained. And I appreciate everything that y'all do to service our citizens in that manner. So thank you, and Chief, a lot of that goes to you, okay? So thank you for that. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Evie, please.
Gladly. Councilman Canelo. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay, and we are adjourned.